It's not recording.
Good to go. All right, good evening. It is 5:00 PM. Special City Council meeting on Monday, December 18th. I'd like to call the meeting to order it acknowledged to press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act.
Nicole, you want to do roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Bogosian?
Here.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Streetman?
Here.
Councilmember Hobson?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Mayor Pounds?
Here.
You have a call?
Thank you. So I'd like to start off making a motion that we add an item to the agenda which will require a two-thirds vote to get it added to the agenda just to give a beach restoration update and storm update.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Desiree or Douglas, you'll want to jump into this topic.
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. As you all know, the city was impacted as the entire region was on Sunday due to a northeaster. We had pretty high water levels recorded in the Charleston Harbor of about 9.86. That's the second highest that we've seen since Hugo. So needless to say, we had significant flooding all over the island. Most of the standing water has receded with the exception of some areas of Waterway, Palm Boulevard. We have some standing water in the areas that we typically have around the 30th block, but most of the flooding has subsided so far. Most of the impact that we had was on the beach. We had significant beach erosion in the breach inlet side between about 108 Ocean and the Beach Access 3A. We have some properties there where their pools are now exposed and some structural damage. We also had some significant beach erosion around Beechwood East. That is, as you all know, an area that was experiencing erosion before the storm and council had approved some money for us to do some sand scraping and the placement of sandbags. That area has now been expanded from about 11 Beechwood East to five Dune Crest. And we also saw some significant erosion around Ocean Club. That is an area that was pretty badly impacted before the last beach for nourishment project was done in 2018. We had Collins Construction, they're the contractor that we've been working on, emergency erosion for the past several weeks since the last storm. And we had them lined up to deploy and begin the debris removal operations on the beach in the areas where they're going to be working under emergency conditions. So they've been, they started today with debris removal there in both locations and they actually started some beach emergency sand scraping in both areas. We have been in communication and working through with OCRM for the additional emergency orders that we require. We've been back and forth in providing documentation to that extent. In the meantime, our public work crews did clear some minor debris from the beach between the Sea Cabins Pier and 3A. And tomorrow they will be working north of the pier towards Wild Dunes. Not, we've assessed the beach a couple of times yesterday and this morning and there is not significant debris in the middle section of the island. We, you know, we're seeing most of the damage on each end, the north and the south end. We had some leaks in city buildings. We're still, you know, evaluating that, nothing major. We had some, will have some damage around the grounds at the rec center. The staff spent most of the day clearing all of the new mulch that was placed in the playground and trying to reuse that and clearing, clearing the grounds and I think we're pretty caught up there. We had some washout around the area of 30th, 36th Avenue. That is the location of the outfall project, the second outfall that we've been working on. We had some blockage there that will need to be repaired and created some erosion around the drainage pipes that were just installed. Yesterday, we communicated with SEDOT who quickly deployed teams to the island to help clear some ditches that were clogged and we submitted another list of locations that we need help with and they are coordinating additional crews that we'll be sending to our way. At a high level, that's where we are. We are prepared to execute a contract with the third-party vendor that we engaged a couple of months ago. If you all recall, we entered into a separate agreement with the debris removal contractor that works for the county. The county has not yet made a determination on a disaster declaration. We are, they're still collecting data from each municipalities to see whether or not they meet the threshold for a request of public assistance. We've submitted ours, our estimates of damage. But we have the ability to trigger a contract with that same contractor in the event that they don't and we want and need assistance for debris removal. We're in the process of quantifying what that would be and have them start helping our public work crews collecting yard debris in miscellaneous as we anticipate we will have an increase of, you know, as people start clearing out their yards and cleaning out their houses if they had any flooding, we anticipate to have more than usual in terms of volume. So we want to be caught up with that and provide assistance to our public work crews. So we have not yet executed that. I will report to council in the event that we do need to in an, under an emergency condition and confirm any expense associated with that. In terms of the beach, we are working with our coastal engineers to determine any additional funding that may be necessary to address the erosion areas. So far, you, council has approved $300,000 for the placement of sandbags at Beechwood East and that was meant to cover 10 homes. Only five had been originally approved for sandbags. Those limits have now been expanded, but we believe that even with the expansion of those limits, we should be very close to the $300,000 number that council approved, the budget that council approved earlier last month. On the other end, council had approved $1,205,000 for scraping and trucking in sand with the goal of reaching 550,000 cubic yards of sand. Needless to say, all of the sand that got moved or trucked in and scraped is gone. A lot of the sandbags are now buried. The water breached and covered most of them. So we are evaluating the need to potentially add more sandbags to a wider area.
Desiree, did you say 550,000? That was 50,000, wasn't it? It wasn't 550,000?
It was, city council approved $1,250,000 with the goal of deploying, moving, whether a combination of trucking in sand and scraping up to 50,000 cubic yards of sand.
Thank you.
All that was done and it's not there anymore. So we were actively, as of two minutes before this meeting, we've received some information from our engineers that we need to review and determine whether or not we need additional funding. So far of that 1.25 that was approved for that area, we've expended about 900,000. We are anticipating getting word from SCPRT where we requested a grant for it to cover 50% of those costs. We anticipate that that will be approved, which will allow us to have additional monies in the budget that had already been approved in October for additional funding. At this point, I don't have enough information in terms of additional costs to request council for additional funds. We will try to work and will continue to work with the current budget that had been approved by council. And in the event that we have to go over that, under an emergency condition, as the purchasing agent for the city, I have the ability to execute contracts for an emergency condition. So I will report that to city council and if we need to get anything approved, that will be presented at the January 2nd meeting, which is a week, a week and a half or two weeks from today. So we have enough in the budget so far, I think, so far with what we've evaluated to take us to that point. And if council needs to consider additional funding at that point, we could do that. I think that's all I have, mayor, unless there's any questions.
Yeah. First off, let me say, as a longtime resident, I really appreciate the reaction from the first responders that we had out there yesterday and also the cautions that were coming out from the police department, fire department, city in regards to people staying off the streets, staying out of the way, staying safe. I thought that was well done. And I think with the sudden impact of this, we all knew this storm was coming, but let's face it, nobody, not even the National Weather Service, knew that the tide was going to be nine and a half feet or whatever it ended up being. They were predicting two feet lower. And then the rainfall that came was much more than what we expected also. So we just basically got whacked and I mean, we got whacked good, no doubt about that. And one of those, one of those few storms that I've been through in the 40 years I've been here that just totally inundated the island for a while. That being said, I do have a couple of technical questions. One of them is the completed 30th Avenue outfall. Do we know how that performed? You already spoke to 36th, which is just half done and got damaged some.
Mm-hmm.
And I talked to some residents who live right beside the 36th Avenue outfall and there was no real change from them. The last storm we had, they still had fish swimming in their lower level. But, you know, I just called them to ask, you know, did it make any difference, good, bad, or otherwise? But no real change there. So just wondering about the 30th Avenue outfall and hopefully we can press even harder on the 41st Avenue outfall because we had such an issue down there. And of course, none of that work's been started because of the permitting process and it being the last project we undertake. So I would just encourage the city to do everything we can to expedite that issue.
So the project at 41st Avenue, which again is a project that's been fully funded by the South Carolina Office of Resilience, is scheduled to start first week of January. So we are, we've already had a kickoff meeting here with all the partners involved and everything is lined up to begin that first week, which we're really excited about. I mean, we definitely need that project. It's been a long time coming. It took us over a year to get permits for that, for that project and thankfully it's being fully funded by a state agency. Nothing is being paid other than $29,000 for permitting fees. All of it is not going to be covered by the city. The 30th Avenue outfall performed great. There was no flooding around 30th. There were some flooding around the avenues and we know that after the outfall project is completed, our next step is working inland and working along the basin that feeds those outfalls. So we know there's still some work that needs to be done along the basins, but the outfall at 30th, which is the one that's been completed, performed well.
Even with the extremely high tide we had sort of pushing back against it, everything worked great.
We were here at 11:30. We were driving around the island and we were, we were not able to go through 31st Avenue on Waterway towards 41st, but that area around 30th was not flooded.
Well, whatever. If it did flood, it would have just been briefly, basically, with the heavy rain.
And I would just add that this event really highlighted the need for the elevation of the Waterway path. You could see how that water, you know, even with the existing elevation of those valves, even if the valves work, with the current elevation, it can go over the road, which it did in the area of 36 and would have. So those valves are not in to that system yet. But had they been in, it still would have overwhelmed that road and still would have gotten to the same level with that level of tide. So if we had had the Waterway Boulevard elevation path project done, it would, it was going to be very close to within tenths of an inch of holding that tide back. I think it, I think it got over, it would have gotten over by an inch, but you can imagine that would have been kind of a trickle for 20, 30 minutes as opposed to the rivers that we saw going across that road. So it really highlighted the need and the importance of that project going forward. It would have made a big difference.
Okay. Jan, real quick.
Go ahead.
Jan, do you have a question?
I just was going to ask for every, the people obviously on the front beach have been terribly impacted, their homes, by what happened yesterday. What can they, what will they see happening on the beach this coming week and maybe the following week is probably all you could talk about right now.
Well, debris removal and restoration began today. So they will see the crews working under the emergency orders as they are approved by the state. We have requested the emergency orders to include sand scraping, which is our, the quickest and more, most efficient way to get some protection quick to those properties.
Which ones?
On both locations. They've started work today, both on Beechwood East and Dune Crest and down at Breach Inlet.
Okay, that's what I want to hear.
Yes. The sandbags that were approved for Beechwood East, as you all know, they were backordered. They are expected to arrive this week. They will be filled next week during Christmas and they are ready to be starting to be deployed first week in January. So that's the timeline for the new sandbags at Beechwood East.
Jimmy?
We just did a project down Merritt Boulevard several months ago. Would you review what was done there and how it performed during the latest storm?
At Merritt Boulevard, we installed some tide valves. Frankly, when we were out here today, yesterday, we were not able to go past fourth on Palm. So we did not make it to Merritt Boulevard, but I believe that it was all underwater.
It was. So, so similar to the condition that we kind of described at Waterway, where tides of that magnitude, they come, they come over and through people's yards that are addition, that are adjacent to the marsh. So we, we know that those tide valves can hold back until it, it goes around in somebody's yard, which is what happened at fourth and Merritt. But we have, we have four tide valves there that work up until a point and the only solution that would kind of complete that boundary would be a seawall at the edge of private property all the way around that, the backside of those houses.
How many feet would that be approximately?
To go all the way around?
Mm-hmm.
I would be guessing, but it would be thousands of feet of seawall on private property that, I mean, they would really have to undertake that.
I had one other question, just a general question. The sandbags that were deployed the past few months on Ocean Boulevard and at Beechwood East, are they still on the beach? Are there still fragments and stuff on the beach? Or is CIC, they still recommending using those sandbags even though it was, I know the storm was, was a huge storm and everything, but it would have left with this debris and the stuff that's really bad for the environment just on being on the beach. Are they still recommending using sandbags?
So the sandbags that were there, we've kind of had different iterations. The last sandbags that were placed did their job until this event. We think they performed well. They, they reduced damage up until yesterday and at that point, that tide overwhelmed them and they really couldn't do much. I guess the good news is, is that in yesterday's event, none of them washed away. They all kind of sank. They're clearly there. They haven't become debris.
And Douglas, that's at breach.
That's at breach.
Right.
And just to clarify, we haven't, we haven't been able to put any down at Beechwood East yet. Those are the, those are the more customized bags. So those are being made and they're not in place yet. So those aren't, those aren't, we don't have bags there yet. So we only have them on Ocean Boulevard. So to answer your question, they performed well until they didn't and then they did. They got overwhelmed and now the erosion line is probably 30 feet landward of where those bags were. But they were doing their job. They were holding back a normal, you know, kind of seven and a half foot tide, but, but this tide just overwhelmed them. We are going to have to remove those. We know that they're, at this point, those bags aren't having any effect. They're, they're at ground level. They're, they're at the sand level and again, they're kind of now 30 feet out into the surf. So we do have to get those up and we know that. We're going to try to get some level of protection back in place before we come back and excavate those because you have to kind of dig the entire trench out. And as Desiree alluded to, we're having discussions right now with our coastal engineer about the existing elevation of the beach and if sandbags are warranted in today's condition or if we think we can get past with just scraping between now and the Army Corps project, which we know should only be six, eight weeks away. So we think that we're so close, we think that we're kind of out of a storm window that we might be able to get through eight weeks without doing the bags, but we want to study that more with the coastal engineers and, you know, see what their advice. They just haven't had, they were out there surveying today, getting all the elevation information today. So we should have that back in the next couple of days to make an informed judgment about the benefit of the bags for now between, between now and the Army Corps project. We definitely know that they're needed on the Dune Crest end because as you all know, there's no kind of relief on the near horizon for that end. We're kind of at the beginning of the process there. We're hoping we're very close to the end with the Army Corps project happening on Ocean Boulevard.
Blair?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to share with everybody a story about one of our residents that I heard yesterday. I went down to Beechwood East yesterday, right after the crest of the storm to see what was going on. Donnie Pitts was there barefoot, walking up and down Beechwood. Beechwood East at that point had about a foot of water on it. It also had sandbars on it from sand that had been pushed up. And the house that was the worst was the Slotripper House. The Slotrippers had been living there for, well before Hurricane Hugo. Mr. Slotripper died this year, but his wife still is there. And I walked under their house and they completely lost everything under the house. All the concrete, everything had fallen. The sand was being pushed up through their house and onto Beechwood East. The ocean was actually, the waves were breaking under their house during the storm. So unsettling to say the least. Her son-in-law and grandchildren were there when I walked up and they were in Beechwood East picking up some of her belongings that were floating down the beach, I mean, down the street. And I talked to the son-in-law and I said, "Well, how's Mrs. Slotripper doing?" And he said, "I asked her that just an hour or so ago." And she said that while this was clearly an inconvenience, "Look where I've gotten to live for the last, all right, 40 years." That's something that I think we all need to carry forward as we do this. Look where we live. And this is a lady that if anybody has the right to be angry, she does. And she says, "Look where I live."
Scott?
Well, I forgot what I was going to ask. That was a very...
You can come back to you.
Yeah.
Sean, did you have? Douglas, Desiree?
Oh, I do know what I was going to ask. Douglas, you mentioned the Corps of Engineers. Has the date tightened up and do they, have they got a little bit more firmer commence date? You mentioned something about six to eight weeks away and I remember it was maybe March or April.
I think that's our wishful, our wishful thinking that they're opening bids December 29th, which seems like an awkward date to ask for bids, but that's, the last we heard from them, they were receiving bids on the 29th and would select a contractor. We haven't heard that they're delayed beyond, the end of January is the last that we've heard. Desiree did get her wish and we've heard that Sullivan's Island is agreeable to Isle of Palms going first. She's been asking since the beginning of the project.
Just gently asking.
Gently, but frequently asking. And we think that we've, we've heard that we would, they would allow us to get sand first if that works with the selected contractor. So that was good news.
Thank you.
Kevin?
So what's the strategy? If you look at some of the pictures, there's a lot of fence damage, there's personal property damage that's sitting there where we're getting ready to bring more sand in. I even saw some structures in some of these pictures. What's the strategy? How are we going to work around that? Are we getting that debris, the personal property debris that's there or are the homeowners going to grab their stuff before we start putting sand? Is there a strategy or a thought around that?
So what we, so our, what we're operating under and what we have been communicating with those folks that are actively out there working, removing debris, our contractor is going to be removing debris from the active beach and along the area where they're going to be working. A lot of these properties have damage to their boardwalks that are still attached. That is going to be the responsibility of the property owner and that will allow us to move pretty quickly. There are a lot of properties that are completely exposed and if our contractor is supposed to start detaching and cleaning all that, it'll take them weeks before they can start to get some protection. So a lot of these properties already have contractors that are out there working. So we have been communicating and telling them to, for them to haul off that, that debris so that our contractor can quickly, can quickly mobilize.
Got you. Thank you.
Jan, do you have another comment?
That was the same.
Put off anything?
No, that's all.
Thank you all for, I know you were here all day yesterday and late, so thank you for doing that and Donnie and others. I know we're involved as well, so thank you staff for pulling that off. So back to our agenda, the purpose is discussion and consideration of recommendations from the Administration Committee of Wage and Compensation Adjustments Based on Market Analysis. Just a couple of quick comments and I'll let John kind of take the floor. I thanked John privately, but I'd like to thank him publicly for all the work that's gone into it along with the committee of Rusty and Scott. So thank you all for your effort. There's no other, no bigger and better investment than we can make in our people. And this is a big number. It's a big decision and it's a large expense item going forward. So it needed to have some additional study and analysis done to it. And John, again, just thank you for doing that. So what I'd like to do is let John provide some commentary where the Administration Committee has been and has arrived at a recommendation that'll come in the form of a motion, but just let's have a fluid conversation before we get to a motion so that we can kind of vet all the pieces, parts, and then we'll take it to a vote. So John?
All right. Thanks, mayor. So the public, excuse me, the Administration Committee has met, I don't know, four, I think four times on this and there's been a tremendous amount of work in between those sessions as well. One of the first things we did, and I'll, I'll give a summary and then I'll open it up to both Rusty and Scott too, to give any comments they have that I may have missed as well as Desiree. But the first thing we did is we looked at what the goal, what we were trying to achieve here. And what we, what we said is to develop a compensation proposal for all city employees as a recommendation to city council that accomplishes the following. And number one is that creates a sustainable philosophy and structure. I don't think we wanted to create something just for, right now, we wanted to kind of give some structure to it that it could continue on. The second thing we wanted to do is achieve a compensate, achieve compensation for city employees that is competitive with the surrounding communities for equivalent responsibilities. And the third thing is stays within the city's current budget constraints or identifies funding that, to achieve what we're talking about here. We did talk, we did add a hiring and retention practices. I think that is something that's going to most likely warrant further conversations with the next Administration Committee. We didn't really get into that fully, but that was the objective. And as a basis was, basis of all this is the study that was done by Evergreen. And Evergreen did a couple of things. They did a survey of current employees, but they also went out and did survey of surrounding area on, on market rates or pay. And for those that you don't realize, our pay is by pay grade. So there's ranges. There's a minimum, a midpoint, and then a maximum per pay grade. And how employees progresses through that pay grade is different. It's for the public safety, it's typically, it's by steps. And by general employees, it's by really the percentage of how far they're through that grade based on tenure, per merit, et cetera. And although the data that we received, in my opinion, from Evergreen was a little bit sketchy in terms of the usefulness of it, I think what it did do is give us at least for our key starting points, some basic data on where the market was. for key starting points, some basic data on where the market was. And I'll give you example, we, for a firefighter, an entry firefighter, and the target that we set for our public safety was to be above market, not at market, but above market. And it suggested that our pay, and our starting pay there, I think, was forty-three thousand dollars was low. So, what we did is we went above market and said this new starting pay, and the proposal was forty-nine thousand dollars. And then what happens for the rest of those pay grades, it progresses through. Same thing for police. Police, our starting pay was forty-eight, I think the proposal that we're saying is at fifty-four thousand five hundred. Again, that's well above what the market is, and then it progresses through that. Similar thing for general, it starts at a base rate and progresses through. And so, what we're recommending is to change all pay grades through, for all classifications, with public safety being above market and all rest being at market. In addition to that, there's different ways or mechanisms than now, once you have the pay grade set, to pay people. And what we're suggesting for public safety is, and by the way, we're not proposing an individual-by-individual increase. What we're proposing is, we set essentially a pot of money, approve a pot of money for the city administrator to work with their staff, to work with the chiefs, and work with the department heads to allocate it the right way and the equitable way. But, the way that we, building this pot of money, or the pool of money, is on a premise that public safety would be based on steps. They would be placed within the new ranges wherever their current steps are. And the general would be placed at their percentage, but capped at seven and a half percent. So, that's the proposal, the pot of money. So, at the end of the day, what we're coming up with is for current employees, so that's existing employees that we have, we'd have a pool of five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that the city administrator would take and allocate out. What that equates to on a fully loaded basis, when you factor in overtime, when you factor in all the fringes and overheads, is roughly a million dollars. So, that's the proposal. I think what it equates to in a half year, I mean, for two thousand twenty-four, is half of that. Our budget ends in June, so we take half of that amount. And I think for us to get through the current fiscal budget, you know, the five-hundred-thousand or so they take, I think we can manage through that. And Desiree, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think going forward, as we look into the next budget cycle, we're most likely gonna have to generate some revenue in our general fund to help pay for this, and most likely is result in some type of increase in taxes. So, it's, and I think we've looked at what we can generate, it's probably three years' worth of, going back three years, and getting roughly seven-hundred-thousand dollars of I think overall, this, what we're proposing meets the objectives. It gives the ultimate flexibility to, again, to the city staff to allocate it, to take into consideration any compression that may be at various individuals or groups, but yet accomplishes what we set out to do. And again, that's to be above market for public safety and at market for the others. I think as a, I think I'm just gonna open it up at that point for questions, but there's a lot of details around it, but I'll open it up.
John, I just had one comment. You mentioned how the pool was devised. I think there was also, what was the percentage that was used for the baseline, I think, for the public safety to help contribute to that pot?
Yeah, I think in general, public safety is gonna get in the range of fourteen percent increases, and roughly seven to seven and a half for all others.
Now, Rusty, you're on the...
Yeah, well, part of it's just reinforcing some of what John and Scott just said, too. I think we were all determined, as we got through this, that we wanted to develop a bucket of money, or whatever, that we could deliver to Desiree and the department heads to utilize as they see fit. They're the ones that are closest to the employees, who protect us every day out here. And we knew that going into this also, that really the special emphasis, this is all of council realized this, that public safety, you know, police and fire, that we really had to put a lot of emphasis on what their compensation is. You know, when the study was done, you know, the key areas that we, you know, we heard is that, you know, most of our employees like the location they work in, they like the opportunity to serve the community and make a positive impact, they like their coworkers and their work environment for the most part, and they like the type of work they do. But then there also was a resounding call from many of them, too, that they were not competitive with their pay versus other municipalities, and that they wanted other opportunities also to be able to perform, you know, additional training areas and things like that that would help them grow in place, so to speak. And a big challenge, and I said this last meeting, too, going forward is gonna be what's being put in place as an outcome of all this, to not only stay competitive with salaries and stay ahead of the curve, but what we can do to put better hiring and retention practices in place, you know, so that we can increase a pool of candidates for the island here. I read an article the other day, North Charleston, Charleston, everybody is struggling now to fill positions, whether it be police department, fire department, everybody has shortages. And, you know, part of it's because of the competitive wages, and part of it's because of the dangers inherent in those jobs, too. So, it's gonna be a big challenge, but I think we dug into it and did the best we could as a committee to try to come up with the right thing to do for the remainder of FY24 and what's in place for twenty-five.
Jimmy?
Good work by the committee, and appreciate the staff and the mayor working on it. Really piqued my interest when I heard tax increase. Y'all just touched on that, correct?
Yeah, we didn't dig into it, and I think that's gonna be an exercise when we look at FY25 budget, you know, what revenues do, what things do. But I think in general, we felt that where the general fund is, it looked like we needed, we're gonna have to add some revenue to cover it.
Yeah, revenue, there's other sources of revenue that I would think that we could look at. Our ATAX revenues are trending up every year, hospitality tax revenues are trending up. I discovered that at least one South Carolina county had worked through the state legislature and had an adjustment on the allocation of their ATAX funds, where they went from, whatever the percentage is now, around fifteen percent, I believe, to twenty-five percent to go to public safety and public services. And so, we should be looking at that, although it has to come down from Columbia, but that would be a significant increase, because we have plenty of tourism, but we need to take care of our employees, and this is one big area I'm gonna do extensive research on.
That's a good point, because we did talk about that as well, and Desiree brought the fact up, that we feel like we can push more of our public safety in particular into the ATAX. I think, what is seventeen percent right now, roughly, Desiree?
Currently, tourism funds in general cover twenty-two percent of personnel expenses in the fire department, and seventeen percent in the police department. With the fire department particularly, we have really good data that shows the number of calls that our folks are responding to residents versus non-residents. So, we have the opportunity to more aggressively utilize our tourism dollars to cover additional positions. As you all recall, in FY24, we added ten new positions, of those ten being six paramedics. Currently, our budget assumes fifty percent of those six paramedics are being completely covered by tourism dollars. That would be something that we can, we have an opportunity, as Councilmember Bogosian indicated, to increase that. Other positions, for example, the short-term rental coordinator position, even though we increase the base rate for the residential rental license this year, it'll generate about a hundred and seventy-eight, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars extra. We are still covering that position under the general fund, so that would be one that I would recommend that we completely cover using tourism dollars, because that is a dedicated resource for that. So, we have an opportunity to increase those percentages, maybe up to thirty percent, and I would feel comfortable with that. We always, you know, wanna maintain the right balance and not leverage them too much, because in the event that those dollars do go down, we are not going to get rid of, you know, the personnel that we cover with them. So, we, I think we have to strike the right balance, but I think we have an opportunity to push a little bit there and still be in good shape.
I'd like to push a lot a bit there.
We can do that.
A little bit, and I think as far as additional revenues in the future, a tax increase should be way down the list.
I don't disagree.
All other possibilities should be fully explored.
And that's what we have, that's how we build our budget, and have been building our budget for a long time, leveraging those tourism dollars as much as we can, and that is why the city's tax rate is the lowest in the region, because we are able to leverage our tourism dollars for not only operational expenses, but specific projects that not only benefit tourism and visitors, but clearly benefit our residential community as well. So, that is something as, you know, we'll explore for FY25.
Well, I don't need to spend any more time on it. The major thing is the presentation by the committee, but I do appreciate everyone, council, hearing me out on this issue. Thank you.
Jan, do you have a comment?
Okay. Couple of things. Also, thank you to the committee for working diligently as you did, because it really did help me with my decision to support this one-hundred percent. The first thing I wanted to emphasize is, I believe this would be retroactive as of January first, I guess it would be.
Effective one-one-twenty-four. It'd be effective one-one-twenty-four.
Okay. So, just if anybody has any questions about that. And then, I don't know whether this is appropriate now or not, but how much do we raise by one millage rate if...
Two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand.
Okay. So, that is something we'll explore next year, but I would hope that we can use ATAX funds also as much as possible.
I'm getting your bails first.
Okay, all right.
Just make sure everybody's got their shot. Rusty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, a point of reinforcement and a point of clarification, I guess. First clarification, I think in our conversation last week, when we talked about utilizing more aggressively ATAX dollars, that, if we go up, say, from the twelve to fifteen percent we are now, up to twenty-five to thirty percent, Jimmy, I don't think, unless I heard incorrectly from Desiree, I don't think that has to be state-approved in any way, because it's not coming out of the state funds for tourism. So, Turk wouldn't be involved in that at all, so that should, that would be at our discretion and to be able to do it through Desiree and her staff's decision as to how those dollars could be used and used prudently and honestly.
So, we would still, if they are the state accommodation taxes, those funds are overseen by Turk.
Right.
We have control over sixty-five percent of those funds. We still have to justify that they are being used for tourism-related expenditures. But that would be the pot of money that we currently use to do transfers into the general fund to cover positions. So, they would still be, we would still need to justify that they are tourism-related, but I think we can make a very valid argument, particularly with public safety, knowing that, you know, their uptake is partly, mostly due by visitors and...
Yeah, and to reinforce that, one of the things mentioned also, and I didn't know the number was this high, but at least fifty percent of our fire calls are due to non-residents, basically. So, I mean, we have, I think, good justification for really pushing the ATAX dollars. And then the area of reinforcement I wanted to mention is just what Jimmy said also. If we can do anything to increase revenue streams and stay away from any millage or tax increases at all, that's what we need to keep striving to do in this island. I guess that's kind of my final comments as a council member up here, but, and I know we'll do that, because we don't budget around tax increases, we look for other ways that we can find the dollars. So, that would be my reinforcement, also, that we look for other ways, traditional ways, that we can generate the funds needed. Thanks.
Mayor, the only thing, other thing I wanted to add is, for the past couple of years, the increase that our employees have seen was in the range of about two-point-five percent. That will be maybe something that we will need to reevaluate moving forward. We wanna, you know, we're making all these significant adjustments, and we don't wanna have to go through this process every two, three years and find ourselves behind. And the reality, it feels like, a little bit like an arms race. You know, every other community is now going to see our numbers in our starting pay, and they're gonna wanna go above that, so that they're more competitive than us. So, I think at some point, it should calm down, but the reality, I think we are going to be faced with needing to be a little bit more aggressive year over year to ensure that our folks are growing within their ranges at a rate that keeps us leading in public safety and keeps us competitive with market in general, in general government. So, that's a consideration for FY25, but I do wanna, I do wanna stress that I think that that is something that we need to do more of, to ensure that we're keeping up year over year.
John, let me make one comment, and then you can move to a motion. You know, I know wages and compensation, and those are emotional topics, and, you know, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand, they sound like a lot to some people, may not sound like much to some, million-one-ish, you know, in total cost, and I know, you know, this is, my guess is, without doing any research, this is off the cuff, but I'm guessing this is probably the largest wage action we've ever taken as a city. And it's important, it's the right one, it's the right time to pull this off. And department heads, thank you. I know y'all sat in a lot of meetings with the committee, so thank you for your efforts in doing that. You know, and I think, you know, John and I have had this conversation a couple of different times, this is our first big step. You know, we're getting ready in two months to start our budget conversations about fiscal twenty-five, around how we do revenue, whatever we need, extra, we may need to do something more with employees again, because I'm where you all are. We do not need to be sitting in this kind of position again, to have this kind of makeup, if you will. And the market's been very dynamic, and it's been, you know, when we did this two years ago, we thought we were putting a stake in the ground and felt good about where we were, and we did. But every community around us, you know, just leapfrogged immediately what was going on, with particularly public safety. You know, personally, I wish we had two or three million dollars to throw around to everybody, it'd be great, but, you know, we have to be fiduciaries of the money and smart about the spending. It's a one-time expense, but it's obviously an ongoing expense. So, again, I'm fully supportive of what we're doing, and glad that council seems to be in a position to get behind this. So, John, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt new pay ranges for all city pay grades, as recommended by Evergreen in their version nine document, and five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the city administrator to allocate to current employees.
Second?
Further discussion or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And John, and committee, thank you again for your efforts and your work. Next item is, we need to move into executive session, so I'll make a motion that we move into executive session in accordance with South Carolina Code, Section thirty-dash-four dash seventy-eight-one, to discuss the annual performance evaluation of the city administrator. Upon returning to open session, council may take action on matters discussed in executive session. So, I made that motion.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Off record at five forty-eight.